Are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Anyway, traffic was a little different than I expected tonight. It was a lot easier last night. But thanks a lot for being here. Thanks to the candidates for being here and a big crowd tonight here at the Harvard Room at Mason. This is the Mason City Council Candidate Forum. On behalf of the Mason Deerfield Chamber, we would like to thank Mason City Schools for hosting us this evening. Great facilities, better than many TV stations here. Like to thank Joy Bennett, Tony Bradburn, Scott Gibson, Gina Sanders, and Josh Stricula for being here this evening and for their interest in serving our community. Thanks to the citizens who have joined us this evening. A lot of folks are actually tuning in at home tonight through the ICRC TV option. They're in their comfort of their own homes as they evaluate which candidate to vote for in this election. Vote up to three of these of the five, three of the five you can vote for if you're at home, just so you know. Additional information on all candidates can be found on the Chamber's website at madechamber.org, as well as on their Facebook page. We also would like to thank ICRC TV here filming the forum, and we'll also be broadcasting live on Facebook. Also, a schedule of playback for watching on TV posted on the Mason Deerfield Chamber Facebook page and website. I have to look down and read all this stuff, otherwise I'm going to miss it. Sorry about that. Format for tonight begins with opening comments. Each candidate is going to have two minutes, you know that, for your opening comments. We're going to go in alphabetical order. Then we're going to go through a series of questions, and each of you will have 60 seconds to answer those questions, unless we specify otherwise. Some of them will be two minutes. And then we'll have 30-second rebuttals. You don't have to use it, but if you want to, very free-flowing. It's not going to be too structured. So if you want to, you know, want to raise your hand, let's just go. Let's have a conversation. Let's have some fun. It's not a big, serious, like you're presenting in front of thousands of people at work. This is you sitting at a table, and the people out here, and the people at home, people of Mason, getting an opportunity just to meet you. And we want to know what you believe and what you think. And hopefully, we can stir some conversation and some interest here for people to get out and vote. So we're going to end the forum with a one-minute closing statement from each candidate, and then there's going to be a 10-second. We want to do the time thing for us, so when we get down? No, that's the final thing. When you get down to 10 seconds, you see one of those. And then when we get down to the very end, you hear one of those. And obviously, we're doing that for everyone, so we don't mean to be rude, but that's just the way we're going to do things, and thank you for helping out tonight. So, let's begin. And if you, I'm going to introduce myself once again, but I've done this three times, so people are probably bored. But Mike Dartis from WLWT Channel 5, anchor of the news there. I've lived in this community for 12 years. I happen to love living in Mason, which is why when they called me and said, "Would you like to do this?" Again, because I did it two years ago, I said, "Of course I would. I'd love to be involved." Just a funny little story. When I married my co-anchor, and it's interesting to work with somebody, by the way that you live with, and two feet apart at all times, and we have this awesome relationship. But when I met her, she lived in Northern Kentucky, and I lived in Mason. And she had made fun of me for years about Mason, because I bragged about it at work all the time. I always said, "Yeah, we do that in Mason, and the schools have that in Mason, and the fields are like this, and there's flowers here, and there's all kinds of things in Mason." So that work, they were making fun of me, saying, "Is it the land of, you know, golden streets, and air-conditioned homes, and, you know, all that sort of thing." But then she moved up here four years ago, and regularly, she says, "By the way, I'm really glad we live in Mason." So I love this community, and I know you do, otherwise you wouldn't be up here tonight. So let's get started. Opening statements. Our candidates for Mason City Council. We begin in alphabetical order. Let's begin with Ms. Bennett, and you have two minutes. Please include why you're running for this office. Go ahead, and thank you.
Hi, I'm Joy Bennett. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to the Made Chamber for hosting this event this year. I'm asking for your vote this November. My husband and I moved here in 2000. We've been here 23 years. We were brand-new parents of a little baby girl named Ellie. Ellie was born with five congenital heart defects. She had four open-heart surgeries in her first three years. She lived with developmental delays until she passed at the age of eight. We spent a lot of time at Cincinnati Children's, frequent flyers, we like to call ourselves. And as a part of that experience, I had the opportunity to serve on what they call the Family Advisory Council at Children's. And that was a cross-section of the hospital community. Many people come to the hospital. We all have different experiences and different needs, and we recognized that in order to make the experience of care better for patients and families, we needed to hear everyone's experiences. I only know mine. I can't know yours unless I hear from you. And I see a lot of parallels there between the council at Children's and a Mason City Council. We all want to have a good experience living in Mason, but I can't know what your experience is unless I hear from you. And I can't make decisions that will make that experience better for all of us unless I hear all of those experiences and take those into account in decision-making. So that's what I bring to this role. I believe, and I am driven by hearing people's stories and going out and proactively seeking your feedback and your input. It's one of the reasons why I launched a community survey just a couple of months ago. I want to hear from everyone who lives here. I want to know what you like, and I want to know what you'd like to see. What do we need to do that can make things even better? And the only way we can do that is if we talk about it. It's time to do, to let council members who will do that work, will do the work of reaching out, being proactive, getting your input, and using that to make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bradburn, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. My intro will be a little different, because I've got 24 years of prior city council experience. My name is Tony Brereton. I'm running for reelection to Mason City Council. I have previously served on Mason Council from 2003 to 2011, and 2019 to present. Before moving to Mason, I served on Springdale Council from 1981 to 1989, and 1991 to 1995. I'm a former firefighter, paramedic, and bailiff. So you can see, I've been involved in public service besides being an elected official. I retired from the Ford Motor Company after 33 years of service. Mason is a dynamic community which we call home because of the high level of services, schools, and sense of community. Mason recently was ranked fourth-best city to live in by Fortune Well. With Mason's economic base and council working with the administration as a team, we strive to provide the highest level of services to all our residents. I'm proud of the level of service provided, and will continue to work to maintain the high level of services we have come to enjoy. Mason shines compared to other communities with a responsive police department and fire department. Our public services, such as snow removal, leaf and brush collection, are second to none. I will continue to support these services. Our community center and aquatic center provide our residents and visitors some of the best facilities in the tri-state. If elected, or I should say, re-elected, I will continue to strive to listen to you and to provide the highest level of service at the least possible cost.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gibson?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Chamber, and thank you to Mr. Dartis for having us here and inviting us here. It's an honor to be considered as somebody that could represent you, and that's something that I really strive to do. And, you know, just as I think about it, it's been my honor to raise my six kids here, and they have all gone through the Mason City Schools, K through 12. My youngest son is now a senior this year, and so he will be graduating from here. I love this place. As leaders of this community, I feel it's all of our responsibilities to dig in and to help make this community better, and we can only do that by hearing all voices. And so every voice counts in Mason. I think we're blessed to have five candidates up here that I think have one thing in common, and that's the best interest of this city. And so I think we have a lot more in common than we do different, and I think that makes us stronger. And Mason should be very proud that we have so many people willing to stand up to support you. You know, I bleed green, and I bleed pink, and for two different reasons. I bleed green because we are Mason Comets through and through, and we love Mason. We love going to the sporting events. I love everything about living in this city. I bleed pink because of my daughter, and my daughter passed away when she was 10. Same thing, you know, Joy experienced probably the same thing that we did. That's when we really saw a community come to life. We saw a community that was just something that you've lived in and we've experienced, but we saw a community that came really alive and that really supported us, surrounded us. They turned this city pink, and it was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders, you have two minutes.
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you to the Made Chamber, to ICRC, to all of the community who came out tonight. It is really refreshing to see so many faces in the room to come and engage and learn a little bit more about us in the one-minute response that we get. I hope you gain a lot of insight, and I hope you'll follow up with questions. If you do after that, if I had a dollar for every time someone asked me, like, "Why would you run for Mason City Council?", like, "Are you crazy?" I'm not. I love my community. I love people. I love my town. For those who know me well, they know I'm a public servant to the core. I've literally spent my whole life serving others, whether it's been professionally in a counseling or mediation role, or whether it's been as a volunteer on various projects in Mason and Warren County. Building relationships and listening to people and what their needs are, what their dreams are, and what they hope for their life and their community, it gives me energy, makes me excited. So as a 23-year resident of Mason, Ohio, in Deerfield Township, I've raised, I say, five amazing kids. I married one off. I'm in the, I married a child-off club now, so I have five instead of four. They range in ages from 26 to 14. I literally have a child and always have in every developmental stage possible. So we are very connected in Mason because of that, and I love that. My kids are quite active in all aspects of the community. I have been an engaged, hands-on public servant in Mason and Warren County for over 20 years. I'm well-trained. I have skill sets that I feel like would benefit the city. I'm a good listener. I'm a mediator. I work in counseling and talk to people about their dreams and desires all the time. So I think those things make me a good fit for Mason City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Stricula?
Thank you, Mr. Dartis. Appreciate it. Thank you so much to the Made Chamber for setting this up. I think it's a great forum, a great opportunity for community members to learn more about us. Thank you for coming out, and then those who aren't here that are watching. Appreciate the opportunity. Appreciate the time. I have a 15-year resident of Mason, probably the shortest amount of time of anybody up here, and I've been blessed to have the privilege to serve you as your council member over the last four years. I've learned a lot over that time. We'll talk about that throughout the evening, I'm sure. I'm a business owner. I run and own my own financial planning firm, volunteer a lot within the community. I try to integrate the things that I do with my kids as much as possible. So I volunteer with Kiwanis, which is an organization dedicated to improving the world one community and one child at a time. Volunteer in the schools when I get a chance. I coach basketball as a volunteer, and the only reason they let me do that is because they can't fire me. You know, I'm a veteran. You might get sick of hearing me talk about my military experience as we go through this, but it plays a lot into how I make decisions and the things, the way I look at things, and how we can get things done, and even, I think, how we look at things practically. I love this city. I mean, you heard, everybody up here does. Mr. Dartis, you said the same thing. That's why we're all here. We live in an amazing community. We chose, like most of you, I think, to live in Mason because of the schools, and we've stayed because of the community. This, we've, over the last four years, excuse me, over the last four years, I've learned a lot, learned a lot about, I think we all have actually learned a lot when it comes to local government. And we made a lot of positive progress, especially over the last two years, moving in the right direction, getting some things done. And I think there's still some things that we need to do. We're okay in some areas, but we need to be great. We'll talk about that as we go. There's just a lot more work that needs to be done, and I hope that throughout the evening, I'll convince you that I've earned the right to your vote for a second term. So thank you so much.
And I do appreciate your show of respect, but you can call me Mike if you want from now on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, though. So incumbents only on this one, so the others can just breathe a sigh of relief for just a few moments. This question's for the incumbents, including Tony Bradburn and Josh Stricula, who just heard from. And we're going to begin with Mr. Bradburn, and then go to Mr. Stricula. "What do you believe the role of the City of Mason government is in the Downtown Mason Mile Project? And as a member of council, how have you demonstrated your support of the efforts that are recently underway?" So we're going to do 60 seconds for each of you, starting with Mr. Bradburn. Go ahead.
The Mason, excuse me, the Mason Mile Project obviously is a project of the CDC to go ahead and see how we can go ahead and redevelop potentially downtown. Obviously, there's some restrictions based upon that because of the physical structure of the area. As you probably all know, I did not vote in favor of that, because I felt that we could also go ahead and do that with our own Economic Development Department. We were basically giving a grant of $180,000. I haven't really seen much results from it, but I will wait until we hear the end of it to make a final decision of where we're going to go with it as far as financial. I know I have talked to some businesses in the main area, and there's some people that really don't know what it means. When I say, "What about this Mason Mile?", they don't know. They're happy where they are. They're happy with what's going on right now.
Mr. Stricula?
Thank you, sir. The role of the, you've got to look at the bigger picture, too. What is the role that you want government to play? And I said a long time that the local government has things that it should be doing, things that it can do but shouldn't be doing, and infrastructure. You know, we're really great at doing those things. When it comes to the Mason Mile, it wasn't, we're filling that role perfectly, and the fact that we did hire somebody like the CDC to go out and do this. For the first time ever, we have the largest community-led downtown revitalization project that Mason has ever seen. And it's because of the efforts that the CDC has done, and it's because the city has gotten out of the way. We are great when it comes to large businesses, that Economic Development Department that Mr. Bradburn talked about. It's great at large businesses and attracting those businesses in. But when it comes to our small businesses, our downtown, we need to step aside. We need to focus on the things that we are great at and let the CDC do what they're great at, which is engage in the community and leading us down proper discussions when it comes to the revitalization of our downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Bradburn, you had mentioned there are some restrictions, and I know there's only so much government can do, but I'm just curious. I know a lot of people care about your opinion, regardless of whether we can have an impact on certain things or not. Pie in the sky, what do you want to see down there? What do you want to see? Are you happy with the way it is right now, or do you want to see it develop down there?
No, I, yes, we can see it develop, but I think the problem becomes when you have individuals that are involved in buying property downtown that don't go ahead and report it to the Ohio Ethics Commission. That bothers me.
So you would like to see it, obviously?
I think we need transparency, transparency in any transaction that we do in the city.
And you feel there's, right now, there's no transparency when it comes to that topic, especially the property owners down there along the Mason Mile?
Yes. So let's, we're dealing with taxpayers' money. And I'm not here to go ahead and use my vote to enrich somebody because they have some inside information.
Mr. Stricula, just curious about your thoughts on this. And this is, to me, this is one of the big issues here in Mason right now. People will criticize and say, "I live in Mason. I have to go to Hamilton. I have to go to Milford. I have to go to Loveland on a Friday or Saturday night if I want to walk around, or the banks, or something like that." Do you want to see it like those other towns, or do you feel it's good the way it is right now? What's your pie-in-the-sky thought on what we should do downtown?
Of course. And I don't think that it's good the way that it is now, and I don't think our residents feel that it's good the way that it is right now. Otherwise, they want to be engaged and involved the way that they are with giving us their opinion, or giving the CDC their opinion. You know, these baseless accusations that Mr. Bradburn makes are ridiculous, and they're not helpful to solving the problem and making Mason what it should be. Now, I don't think we should be Loveland. I don't think we should be Hamilton. I don't think we should be Milford. I think we should be Mason. And that's why we're going down the process the way that we are, and that's why it's as slow as what it is. We have to move at the speed of trust. Somebody really smart once told me that, right? And so we have to crawl through this process, and we have to listen to the constituents. We have to hear what they want, as opposed to trying to shove some large development down their throat, which is what happened a couple of years ago. We learned from that lesson, and we need to move forward. And this is the right process, and we're going to get some great, I think, results out of this, some ideas that's truly what the community wants and led by the community, not by the city.
Because there are three others here, we're going to move on for now, but I know you guys probably want to go talk a little bit more about some of these issues, and we're going to allow that as we move on. This is for the challengers, though, right now, including Joy Bennett, Scott Gibson, and Gina Sanders. So we're going to begin with Ms. Sanders here, and then Mr. Gibson second, and then Ms. Bennett. "What do you believe the role of City of Mason government is in the Downtown Mason Mile Project? And as a member of council, how would you demonstrate your support if you were elected?" 60 seconds, and if you want to use rebuttals, of course, we can, or follow-ups and that sort of thing. So let's begin.
Did you say you wanted me to start?
Ms. Sanders, yes.
Okay, just making sure. I didn't want to talk out of turn.
No, no, you're good.
Um, well, a couple of things here. How do I feel the City of Mason? How can I, if I'm on council, demonstrate more support for the Downtown Mason Mile, small businesses and their growth? For the last 10 years, I've been involved in all kinds of initiatives in downtown Mason, most recently in the Downtown Mason Mile Project through the CDC. Before, I knew much about how government interacted with Chamber of Commerce in other cities and with community development corporations. If anyone knows me well, I know I'm a researcher, so the first thing I'm doing is getting online, trying to research other cities and what they do and how they interact with their CDC, and it was very insightful and informative. And I think that the process, like Josh referred to, I think with a community, when you have a set structure and there is nothing you can do about some of that infrastructure, we have to be creative, and we have to be wise, and we have to put down personal agendas, and we have to work together as a community, and the process is to engage the community along the way, and then we can take action.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, the Mason Mile Project, how would you support if elected?
I mean, I realize that downtown has been very frustrating for many of you, and not only just the residents, but the small-business owners. It's been frustrating for me as a resident as well. And so from the outside looking in, it seems like it could be pretty easily, like, hey, why don't we get that done? And as you get more information, and as I've, you know, started to dig in more, it's a little more difficult than that. When you talk about wanting to do stuff with downtown Mason and the Mason Mile, you know, I think you first have to look at who owns the property. And so Mason can just come in and do what they want if they don't own the property. I think, you know, that makes, that's really a big roadblock, I think, that a lot of them are coming to. You know, when I was here, I watched this debate, I believe, 2021, the last debate that was done here, and this was a topic then, and it was a serious topic, and all of the candidates talked about that. And so here we are, two years later, continuing to talk about that. And so at some point, you know, it sounds like, you know, Mason has, you know, done quite a bit for the Made Chamber to pay them, but at some point, you know, you get paralysis by analysis, and so you have to start making decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Bennett, you have 60 seconds.
One of the things that I discovered in the vigorous debate over the property deal with Cohen in 2021 is that we lack a current downtown plan. The most recent one that we did for downtown was done in 2002. That was before the iPhone. Our lives and our city look radically different today. And so it is long past time that we develop a downtown plan. And the good news is, we have people working on it. And I think that's, that the fact that we have a community development corporation, which I think it's helpful to define our acronyms, CDC is Community Development Corporation. It's a nonprofit entity that has convened people in the community together, business owners, property owners, residents, and then the whole community, to find out what we want, what we're looking for, and to build consensus. We have to do this as a community going together, and I would support continuing that work and having it be a community-led project.
Thank you. Instead of rebuttals, just kind of follow-ups here. We're going to begin with Ms. Sanders. What has your involvement with the Mason Mile been like the last couple of years, and what excites you about the future?
Yeah. Gosh, I've been a part of the CDC efforts since we kind of reconvened post-COVID. And I've been an activator, which is someone who goes around and listens and asks questions and helps provide information to businesses and residents along the Mason Mile. Beyond that, I live not far off the mile. I walk on the mile, and I dream about the mile all the time and all the things that I think it could be. But that aside, I think it's important to recognize what Joy said. Where we were when we had a plan 20 years ago and where we are now is so very different. And I am hearing data about how, you know, I would love for my kids to come back after college, not only work in the area, but also be able to afford to live in the area. The 20s generation doesn't want a household maintenance to take care of. They want to live and be able to walk and access things quickly, and they don't want a lot of home responsibility. So I, my dream is to draw our kids who graduate out of Mason back to Mason.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, I know it's a difficult question, because, you know, you laid out some of the challenges, and then I ask you next, what excites you about the future down there? And it's difficult, because it is frustrating for a lot of folks, but what excites you about the future of the Mason Mile? And how have you been involved the past couple of years as just a citizen?
Yes, I, you know, my experience has just been a Mason resident, watching what's been happening with the mile. I guess my excitement now would be that there is a plan, and it is starting to move forward. I would love to see, as Joy said, a master plan. I mean, I think that would be something that we would all want to do before we start making decisions on these things, is to see something that's laid out. And so I think that would be something we'd look for in the very near future. And so it's exciting to see that it's been worked on. I love to see that after probably 20 years people have been talking about it, that we're actually, it's still very important. We're talking about it here tonight, and each one of us, we're very concerned about it. We know that's something that we need to do. So I love the fact that there's excitement in the air, and I feel, you know, whoever you choose up here, we're going to do something about it.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett?
One thing that I think is helpful to know is that these things take time. I had the chance to talk to a PR person who's in Hamilton and who's worked with the City of Hamilton for 15 or 20 years now, and I said, "Hey, it looks awesome over there. How long have you been working on this?" And he said, "Well, we took about 10 years to work on the planning stages, and we've been actually actively building and developing for five." I was like, "Okay, that's longer than anyone's term on city council, so it's a good reason to have a community-based, separate-from-the-council entity working on this." So you have that continuity, and you are able to bring more of the community in together. I'm really excited about the ideas that have been presented. I got a chance to participate in a kind of an open-house-style preview of concepts that was held at the middle school, intermediate school. We had more than 100 people come to see those ideas, and they were really cool. That got me really excited about the potential.
Thank you so much. So now we bring all five of you back in on this next one. We asked this last night at the Deerfield Township Trustees Forum, and it has to do with the word regionalism. So within Warren County, obviously, Mason and Deerfield are the two largest drivers of growth across the area. And one specific example now, I'm going to ask you, of a way that you would demonstrate your support of regionalism in our area with Deerfield Township and the Mason Deerfield Chamber, and how you would achieve it. And we're going to start this one. 60 seconds, Mr. Gibson.
I think we start by giving them an infrastructure that they can get to and from pretty easily. Things like walkways, things like bike paths, things like roadways that are easy to maneuver, and traffic patterns that are a lot easier. I know even as you're going through downtown, trying to get from one side to the other, even within that mile, it becomes very difficult, especially if you're at rush hour. And if you've been down there, you know exactly where I'm talking about. And so those things, I think, we have to provide for them as the city. I believe that we are partners together. And so when you see the regional, and you see Deerfield and Mason, it's the, they're together. They're two entities that are together, and so we need to look at both.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Sanders, how would you demonstrate your support of regionalism?
Yeah, well, I think regionalism, understanding regionalism and the role it plays in our surrounding neighborhoods and communities, of course, made uh maid chamber like Mason and Deerfield. But regionalism, I think, is even bigger than that. Um, I would specifically, when we talk about the tennis tournament, uh discussions that have been going on. You know, that is a, that is a global, like it's regional, it benefits the region, it benefits the state. It benefits Mason, Deerfield, um, the economics, the type of companies that come and want to be here. Um, that eventually those dollars flow in and out throughout our economy and they support our schools through their tax dollars. So regionalism is something I think we always have to keep up at 100,000-foot view and remember that it's not just about exactly what we're doing right here within the city limits. We have to be willing to be on a team and value things more than just our specific space.
Thanks. Mr. Stricula?
Thank you, sir. Um, I think the answer is actually on the question. How do we do regionalism with Deerfield Township and the maid chamber? And it's the maid chamber, showing the support for what is by definition a regional uh institution and helping them that the maid community development corporation was born out of a uh study that Deerfield Township did. And so I think it's showing support for them, showing support for what they can do and how they can bring the two communities or multiple communities together. Uh, as Ms. Sanders talked about, uh, there's bigger pieces than just the two of us uh around the area that are affected by what we do. Uh, and other things that I'll say is that it it's beyond even just the elected officials. Staff has, uh, you know, our city manager has an amazing relationship with the Deerfield Township uh administrator, Eric Reiners. And, you know, they get along very well and they do a lot of things together. When uh a great example of that is when we brought Festo in, uh, they were looking for different types of housing and so they they were showing them areas in Deerfield, in Mason. It doesn't matter where they live, you know, if we can attract them and attract that business here, it benefits everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett?
I think it's interesting because um I've had some direct experience with the more competitive uh angle here where when Deerfield and Mason weren't always getting along, um, it's, it hurts individual residents. Uh, we actually discovered it when, in 2008, when our daughter died and we wanted to bury her at Rose Hill Cemetery right across the street. That was the first time I learned that Rose Hill is Deerfield, not Mason. And they wanted to charge us four times more for the burial plot because we were Mason residents. And and I felt personally attacked. Now, I was obviously an incredibly emotional moment for me, but that just was appalling to me that that would be the scenario. And so it's so important that we put petty dollar dickering aside and we keep in mind that we have people here, this is a community and what's good for Mason and should and is good for Deerfield and vice versa. I'd love to see us thinking in terms of regional hubs for dining, shopping, entertainment. Have our bike paths and sidewalks actually all connect so we can get from Deerfield to downtown to, ooh, let's be regional and go to Warren or to Butler County and go to Voice of America. Um, there's some good stuff over there, too.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bradburn?
Yes, uh, we we have tried the approach of regionalism with Deerfield in the past. Uh, fortunately, some of the political operatives in Deerfield have changed. Uh, a number of years ago, we built a new station up at Station 51, provided a bay location for their engine, provided a area for their firefighters to sleep. They declined to use it. They decided to house their engine at a barn out at the um uh Fluckenstein uh park. However, I think things have improved. I know most recently that uh we have gone ahead and passed some recent legislation that allowed a bike path uh down on the Socialville Foster Mason Road area and the Deerfield area, which I think is good. And the way to be able to work regionally is to communicate with them. Uh, I would ask any of these other council candidates, have you ever talked to a Deerfield Township trustee? I have. We do do Jeds with uh Liberty Township. And I would say that uh to go off of Joy Bennett's comment as far as sidewalks, maybe we could go ahead and look at putting a sidewalk on Mason Montgomery that goes through Deerfield and Mason to get to the downtown area of Mason. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody want to rebut? Does anybody want to use 30 extra seconds on that topic or would you want, like to move on? Ms. Bennett, go ahead.
I just want to be clear that it is not the same today. Um, because I have talked to our trustees and did a little research. There is not that disparity in charge. So I want to be clear that doesn't exist now. Uh, and and I also think that there's a lot of opportunity for supporting each other with that connectivity. We could explore also some maybe regional transit opportunities to support people going from place to place. What if we had shuttles? We do that for festivals from satellite parking. We could have those kinds of things from Deerfield and downtown and to the parks, to satellite parking if parking is a challenge. So I think that 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 would be a really exciting way to work together.
Thank you. I'm going to just ask you to raise your hand. If you want to say something, go ahead, Ms. Sanders.
Yeah, I think it's really important. I mean, on a practical level, connecting via pathways, um, bike paths, walk paths, things like that is great. Um, on a level of like what could maybe I offer or we offer as a council, I think that communication is key. I think that keeping lines of communication open, providing opportunities for the Deerfield trustees and for um the Mason City Council to communicate so that we can cross-market efforts. Um, when there's something really cool going on in Deerfield, why not also find out what's really cool going on in Mason? So people actually pull up, stay a while and spend some money, hang out.
Thank you. Anybody else? Or are we good? Okay. So this is a question for the incumbents first. This will be a 60-second question. And it has to do with small businesses. And we know in a lot of towns like Mason, small businesses are key in allowing an area like Mason to thrive. So I'm going to ask you incumbents, starting with Mr. Stricula, what have you done to support small businesses here in the Mason area? And what do you see as future opportunities to show support and things you'd like to see down the road?
Sure, thank you. Uh, you know, I I came into this almost exactly four years ago, probably a little naive even. Uh, and about three months after I got on council, we had a global pandemic hit. Uh, and out of the gate, again, some of that naivete took over and I said, we need to do something. We need to do something for our community as businesses were shut down. And, you know, we we pushed forward and introduced anyway a a small business recovery package uh that at least got the conversation going. Uh, and, you know, as a small business owner myself, I mean, a lot of it's just communication, talking to them, uh, moving forward, continuing to develop those relationships, that trust, because there wasn't a lot of trust, because there wasn't a lot of things going on. They didn't feel like they were listened to, especially in the downtown area. Uh, you know, so my entire four years, while I've learned, and I think some of that naivete is gone, uh, you know, that support for small businesses is still there and it's it's through the actions that we're doing. It's through working with organizations like the maid CDC to help with that community-led downtown development. Um, and again, just continue to listen and and seeing how we can improve. The city does a great job, again, with large businesses, small businesses. That's one of those areas where we can do a lot better.
Thank you. Mr. Bradburn, your history and your future with small businesses in Mason, Ohio?
Well, I think um uh Councilman Stricula has headed up on a point during the pandemic. Council as a whole did go ahead and appropriate, uh, as I recall, about 2.2 million dollars for small businesses. Uh, as far as uh gift cards, sewer charges are reduced for businesses, so on and so forth. So I think, you know, we addressed the issue probably most aggressively. I'm not so sure what some of the other communities did, other than I know that Lebanon had a $40,000 uh program. I think the other thing you see that's ongoing is um we're using our uh public uh magazine, Center Point, to basically continue to highlight those small businesses in downtown Mason to say, hey, here's that small downtown Mason, here's this, these type of shops. We really like like you to visit them. And then you have the uh the E-card uh thing where residents can go ahead and buy an E-card that goes to a number of res- uh businesses that have signed up to use that as a way of attracting more business. And I think that's been a good thing.
You want 30 or are you good?
Please.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think adding to um what we can be doing in the future, again, because we're we're not great when it comes to small businesses as a government. Uh, and I think we need, there needs to be more support. There needs to be more support, not only for existing small businesses, but new ones coming in. Four years ago, I spoke to an individual, he was looking to open up a uh pharmaceutical company. He needed some warehouse space and he called the city. Uh, and they never called back. Uh, so he's in West Westchester Township because they called, they were excited. All right, so some of it's uh resources at the city, but I think it's it's really about, and I mentioned partnering with, but creating a small business liaison, potentially housed at at the chamber. But somebody that knows the ins and outs of the zoning code, uh, somebody that they can call, knows who to talk to within the city and knows who to uh speak to and can help those small businesses navigate some of those uh challenging issues.
Thank you. That was the first.
One more, one more ring.
That was the first three rings right there.
I didn't, I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it.
Mr. Gibson got the first ring of the night, but that's a three ringer, so. Right now. All right, this is, would you like to counter? Go ahead.
No, I won't counter. I just, if if you're telling me that the city did not call back, did you, did you contact the city in regards to that, Mr. Stricula?
That was four years ago when he talked to me and it was uh time before that when he did it. He was already opened up in Westchester Township and it was done.
Okay. That was only 15, but thank you. Appreciate it. For the challengers now, uh, we're going to start with Ms. Bennett on this one. But staying on the topic that we just asked the incumbents, it's been an increased desire to support our local and small businesses in recent years. How do you feel the city of Mason could demonstrate more support for our small businesses and their growth? We'll begin with Ms. Bennett.
Well, first of all, I think it's important to define what you mean by small business. Uh, the government will actually include a business that has over $40 million and 1,500 employees. Uh, so I'm going to talk about micro businesses, uh, which would be like our local mom and pop shops, our our coffee shops and yoga studios, florists, roofers, general contractors, folks like Josh and I who own small businesses, uh, who provide professional services. Um, I I believe our city could do a lot more for small businesses. And I have learned about some really exciting opportunities that other cities have done. Um, there there are hubs where you can apply as a small business owner for a grant that you can then use to receive professional services like legal, accounting, IT, marketing support. Uh, I have a colleague who provides sales, coaching and logo design for hub clients in Arizona. And it's, it's just been an incredible program for the small businesses there. And I'd love to see some more innovative ideas like that to support small businesses starting and staying here in Mason.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson?
I believe on this you, the most, on this issue, the most important thing is to listen. I mean, God gave us two ears and one mouth for a reason. And a lot of times, um, we're eager to get our point across and we're eager uh to make sure everybody knows what what we stand for. And and in that, sometimes we're, we're not listening to what they're telling us. And um that happens a lot. And my wife and I uh sat down with the owners of Two Cities a couple of weeks ago and with six other couples. And we sat on the patio out there just talking about what their dreams were, what their desires were for downtown. And in that, just with all of the other uh couples that we're with, they're, they then were, you know, telling us what their desires were for downtown. Um, and they want to continue to invest in downtown. They're waiting for an opportunity to do that. And then you'll talk to, you know, I've talked to other people downtown that um that say there's nothing wrong with downtown. They love it just the way it is. So you have two polar opposites that I think we need to continue to work on and listen to what they're saying to us.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders?
Well, not to be redundant, but I do, I agree, communication and listening is the key. I think the answer to that question lies within the small business community. I think if we can provide spaces, places, forums for them to communicate with us and let us know what the hurdles are, what the struggles are, what would be helpful. I, not owning a small business on the Mason Mile, I'm not going to know what the answers are to those questions. And I think that we need to tap into the wisdom of the community who's doing it day in and day out. Um, separate from that, I would say that I have found myself engaged in working um with Bay Source Flowers, um, talking with Chuck at Adesso and Dennis at Whippy Dip and the guys at Two Cities. And um even my daughter works at AR Workshop in Mason. And they are at risk of turning over because there's not enough foot traffic and the owners of the building won't provide enough marketing and signage. They feel like those are the things that would help them be better seen and attended. So um just finding spaces to hear from the small business owners to find solutions.
Thank you. For the challengers, we do have 30 more seconds if you want, or we can move on. Are we all good or anybody? Okay. So this is for all five again. And we're going to begin this time with Mr. Bradburn in a second. Um, talk a little bit about within Deerfield Township. You have development and activation of District of Deerfield, Town Center, Kingswood, Cattell Park, which is funny because I don't know how to pronounce that park. I've been here 12 years. Is it Cottler, Cattell? Cattell, thank you. I I've heard it pronounced about 14 different ways, but Cattell Park. Uh, within Mason, we have Kings Island, Great Wolf Lodge, downtown Mason Mile, obviously the new and thriving brewery scene as well. How do you feel that we should go about creating better connectivity between business districts and neighborhoods in the maid region to create a regional destination and hub, not just for Mason, but for the entire maid region? And we're going to start again with Mr. Bradburn on this one.
That's a pretty good question there.
I thought so.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't come up with it, but.
Yeah, well, you know, you're probably talking about 36 square miles, but we we are already kind of a regional hub attraction anyway. When you've got 3.3 visitors coming to Kings Island in 2022, we're already a hub for people that are coming. The question is, how do you get the people that are coming to those big events to know what the smaller venues are that they can go as far as the breweries, the restaurants and so on and so forth? And I'll be quite, I don't have an answer for that at this point in time.
Well, I appreciate your honesty. I think that's what we're here for. Ms. Bennett, you're next on this topic.
This is a place for us to collaborate, to work together and to share information. Um, I think that in order for us to communicate with people about what the opportunities are, we have to actually centralize all that information. So, you know, Mason's doing certain things and Deerfield's doing certain things and Loveland and Westchester. Do we have somebody who is, whose job it is, whose responsibility is to collect all of that and then push it out in a way that makes it easily digestible? You know, I I don't know that we have a communications person assigned here at the city of Mason. Um, I don't think we have a PR person. We don't have our own version of Tracy Carson, you know, Public Information Officer with the school district. And I think we need someone. Uh, and we need someone who can do that for the region. Um, there's a lot of opportunity. We could, I mean, I've heard people do like the Donut Trail. Um, they've got passports and they get them stamped at all the donut shops. We could do something similar with all the local breweries, uh, local shops and that sort of thing to encourage people to to go all around the area. So I think, I think there's a lot of creative opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Stricula?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think there's a couple of different ways that you can look at this. Uh, one is from physical connectivity, uh, which we talked a little bit about. And then the other one's from more of kind of a virtual, I guess. Uh, you know, and the physical connectivity is is, you know, it's just that. I mean, you know, bike paths, uh, better traffic flow, I mean, things along those lines, infrastructure. Uh, robo taxis, I meant for robo taxis, if we can get those here. I think that'd be a good one. The, but the, I, I, when I read this question, I, there was, there's a moment with Vega that when we put Vega in, uh, or brought them in and they, they were built just north on 741. One of the things that the city did was they gave all of the employees in partnership with Vega a $25 gift card to, uh, it was over 70 businesses within the city and and uh larger region. But the, the, so it was great. I was, it was a great opportunity to connect these new employees that are just coming to the region with those local businesses, uh, and they're with a $25 gift card. The problem was, the issue was that they didn't tell the businesses that they did it. So there's no opportunity then to allow them to market to them or or open it up. So we missed a little bit there, but I think some of that virtual connectivity is is a place that we can go as well.
If you want 30 later, we'll give it back to you. But Ms. Sanders, go ahead for now.
Well, I think anytime we're talking about connectivity, we're talking about communication. Um, and I I miss the days a little bit, um, where you got your local newspaper and you were, it opened it up and you had it on your counter and everything that was going on in town and around town that connected people was in the local paper. Um, with virtual social media, all the things, I feel like we're almost inundated with so much information that sometimes we're paralyzed and if you're like me, just stay home instead and have dinner at times. Um, because it's just so much, right? So I do think that there probably, I think, gosh, what a great idea to have a communications office. So I do think that there probably, I think, gosh, what a great idea to have a communications officer that is regional, you know, that serves all of the areas we're talking about. And we have one place where that comes from. Certainly, I would love a Tracy Carson for Mason and Deerfield. A place where we all knew we could go to get all of the information that we need and even point people from out of town as they're traveling in to say, hey, go to this page. All my favorite places are highlighted right there. Here's the addresses. This is what's going on. So I like that idea.
Just real quick, I want to just say, because Tracy Carson's been brought up about five times tonight. In my business, transparency is huge, and I just want you to know, the Mason City Schools, when something happens and I call, she picks up the phone right away. So I think we can all learn, where is she?
I don't think she's here.
Oh, she was sitting over there the other night, but we could all learn a little bit about that transparency and picking up the phone and answering to things and not hiding. So I'm glad you bring her up. Mr. Gibson, on that question, you have 60 seconds.
Well, if Tracy Carson's not going to run for president, then I think we all have a chance. I think, you know, in talking, listening to everybody up here, you go back to, we are one. Most people, most residents, when they're driving around, they see Mason, Deerfield, kind of the region, all the same thing. And so we're talking about something that a lot of people don't even realize that there's, there's an issue with it. And I'm not saying that there is really an issue, but could we do things better? Absolutely, you know, when you collaborate together, when you're bringing people together and sharing ideas together. And, you know, sometimes we've lost the, you know, just the art of doing like what we're doing right here. We're all here together. We're all discussing. There's no emailing going on because we know what happens with email. It's really easy to do that. And then I think that, you know, I send Joy an email, and she's going to know exactly how I intended that to sound. And that just doesn't happen. So the more of things like this we can do for the region, the better off we're all going to be.
We do have 30 extra for anybody who wants it. You don't need it? Anybody, we want to move on? You were first, because I said I would give it to you first, but no?
Oh, that's okay, Ms. Bennett.
Go ahead, Ms. Bennett.
I was just going to say, there's a few really specific things that I, I can think of right off the bat that would help. I live off of Mason Montgomery Road, and I can't ride my bike all the way down to Deerfield Town Center. There, there are some gaps, and there's, there's a gap in Mason. And then there's another gap in Deerfield. And if we just looked at super practical things like that, that would make a huge difference. We also need a sidewalk that goes from the Mason Mile over to Warped Wing and Culvers and the Lucky Dog Grill. You know, we, there's this field, and you, you just, there's not a great way to get across that section. It's simple.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Please, thank you. You know, and I think the other thing too is that when we talk about creating this better connectivity, we have to have the destination on which to go and what to create. We've got a lot of spots, a lot of places, and you mentioned some of those, right? Going to Kings Island, people drive through to get to Kings Island, and then they drive out. You know, Deerfield's doing a great job with that, with the Town Center and the district that they have going in down there. And, you know, we need to be better at that to where we can send, where people come through, they stop. And opposed to just going to one restaurant and leaving, they stick around for a while. So we almost have to create the destination too before we can start to connect.
Thank you. So this is just for the challengers, and this is a little bit easier because the incumbents can't defend themselves on this. But we're going to start with Mr. Gibson. And let's say to you, what would you have done differently to address some of the issues in the past two to four years handled by Mason City Council? Go ahead. Two minutes, by the way, if you want it.
Well, hold on, Tony, Josh. You know, it's really, that's a difficult question sitting between these two guys, right? Because there's a lot of things that the city council has done well. And it's really easy to sit back and play Monday morning quarterback, you know? Joe would have thrown it to Chase again. We would have won that game. And so those things are really easy to sit back and do, especially when most of us don't know all the facts. And so we think we would have done something differently, but we didn't know the facts behind it were really impacted their decision. And so if nobody knew that Joe Burrow was actually injured and not playing up to 100%, it'd be really easy to criticize him. And, you know, it sounds like a lot of people have already started criticizing him. But knowing that he's injured and not playing at 100%, it's really easy for me to go, okay, I'm going to give him a little grace. And I, I see myself as a peacemaker, a bridge builder. And I think that just, you know, with that bringing to the table, I could help with some of these things that I have seen. And so of a lot of you, and you guys are all seeing different things than, I mean, nobody's seen the same things that I am. But I think that bringing that to the table could really help us forward, move things forward. And then also, I think it's important that we learn that we need to shed more light on things and give people more detail so they understand the decisions that we make a little bit better.
Well, it's funny you bring up sports and politics because trust me, on social media, they're one and the same when it comes to controversy. And let's hope that Joe does throw to Jamar Chase a few more times in Arizona this weekend, and we don't have to talk about that any longer. Ms. Sanders, you have two minutes. You get to play Monday morning quarterback, I guess. Tonight's Wednesday night though, right? So Wednesday night quarterback, what would you have done differently, if anything, the last two to four years?
Yeah. Well, I think, like Scott said, it, I'm not going to be the first to throw stones at anything that's gone on over the last two to four years because I wasn't there, I wasn't in the room, I didn't have the full information. We get to see part of that as residents, a small glimpse when we can watch council meetings and things like that. But, you know, these decisions that we're making are complicated. And spending time with Eric Hansen over the last couple of weeks, just picking his brain, trying to learn more about our charter and what we do and what is in the scope of council and how that works, has been really illuminating because it, it's complicated. And quite frankly, our staff at Mason is so well-trained, they are hardworking. They have a lot of knowledge that council members don't have, and we rely heavily on them to be able to make fully informed decisions. I would add that I do think that sometimes problems can come about when the community is not fully aware or maybe been trained up on everything that's involved in a decision. So if a decision comes down and we haven't communicated well, we haven't prepped well, we haven't thought about, okay, how is this going to land? You know, I think it's important to remember as council members how it's going to feel on the other side of that decision and make quality decisions about how we inform the public well, how we ask for feedback. And then ultimately, when we make a decision, I think that builds trust between the community and the council members. And the last thing I would add to that is, I do think it's important to have new faces in council. I'm glad that every few years we have a choice to make because I think it's important to have fresh ideas and maybe people who haven't gone through those historically challenging times who can come to it and maybe stand in the tension well and be able to see through some of the emotion and history and really get down to the issue.
Thank you. Joy?
I do have a list of ideas.
All right, let's hear them.
First of all, I would say that we need to abandon personal agendas, particularly when there's a crisis. There, it seemed like there were personal agendas in play even when the pandemic hit and we were facing a historic crisis. I think that the first and foremost responsibility of people on council is to focus on the community's needs, our local community. National headlines don't have any place here in our city. We have our own challenges and our own needs, and bringing national politics into our city is a mistake. I think that our council could do better in being more proactive and seeking public engagement. It's somewhat passive right now. We expect that people will come in to a council meeting and speak, and we place limits on their time. And I know that there are good reasons for that, but we need to do some, we need to do better at engaging the community and actually using their feedback to inform our decisions. I think it's also important to research things thoroughly so that we don't have to backtrack. I know our council has gotten ahead of themselves sometimes on some different issues and had to work backwards and say, okay, we, we're going to have to back up a bit. And I know that that's easy to do, but I would definitely say we've got to make sure that we have done our research before we push anything out. And, and then be willing to stay. Yeah, we messed that up. We could, we could have done that better. A little bit of humility goes a long way. And finally, I will just say, we, we need to be willing to acknowledge other people's great ideas. I, I have, my husband and I talk about this not invented here mentality where, you know, somebody puts out an idea, and, and if it wasn't your idea, then you have to put your fingerprints all over it so you can take credit for some of that at least. And that doesn't have any place in public service. This should all be about what's best for the community.
Thank you. Obviously, you've made your, you know, opinion loud and clear on that hot button topic of two years ago. We don't have to discuss it. We can leave that in the past. But if anybody wants 30 seconds to talk about that, you have more than, you have 30 second rebuttal, or no? We good? I think we're going to go on. Okay. So this is for the incumbents right here. We're going to begin with Mr. Bradburn and then Mr. Stricula. We're going to extend time to two minutes, just like we did here with the challengers. What lessons have you learned as a council member with respect to some of the issues in the past four years of service? Is there anything looking back on that you would second guess? Council decisions, your own decisions, that sort of thing. Mr. Bradburn, you can go first, and you do have two minutes.
Well, I don't know, second guess, I sure would have liked not to have a pandemic in the middle of it. Okay? I think all of us would have loved that. You know, I think it showed the resilience of the community during that time. I think there was a lot of, people didn't know what was going to happen. People were panicky. And we, as elected officials, were taking the best information we could at the time as far as to protect the public health and safety and welfare. What would I have done different? Probably the, the only thing I would have done different would have been the, the trying to calm down the temperature sometimes in some council meetings that just didn't need to get so emotional. I realize we all have our passions, one way or the other. But at the end of the day, everybody that comes in is still my neighbor, still my friend. Your, your stepson makes good cheese conies at Skyline. Okay? So, so we, we know each other informally or formally. So, yeah, I, I think it, you know, I think the pandemic really messed things up. And I think to some degree, we're seeing the effects of that as far as economically, cost. And we're definitely seeing it in the city government as far as when we have to go ahead and purchase new equipment and so on and so forth. Prices are just unbelievable. $1.7 million for a fire truck. That's a lot of money, but it lasts 20 years. So the bottom line, I think the pandemic, it sharpened people's teeth a little too much.
Thank you. Mr. Stricula, looking back, any changes? Any thoughts?
Lessons learned? Be Robert's Rules of Order. Learned that pretty quick. Yeah, no, I think that the, the biggest lesson that I learned was really looking at the issues holistically. You know, understanding the whole issue and looking at it frankly unemotionally. And a lot of that was back to my military experience and how you, you address the issues, positives, negatives. I mean, how, what are other ways and other avenues at which we can accomplish the same goal? And can we adjust midway through and make things happen? You know, being able to maintain composure during meetings, be able to have reasonable discussions. You know, without, you know, again, getting emotionally charged. And then, and then looking at it and voting on the issues practically and unemotionally, you know, without political bias and, but doing what is, what is really best for the city. And that's because that's got to be, that has to be our focus. That's got to be our focus. So what, what can we do that is best for the city? And, and again, looking at those issues from that lens and through that lens. So that was, that was the biggest lesson, was just understand the whole issue and understand that, that, you know, residents don't always have all of the information. By the time that they've come in, they've seen that, I think it was mentioned in the headline. And, you know, they're fired up. Something's wrong. And so lacking, you know, being able to inform the community as best as we possibly can and doing that.
We good? You want to move on? Okay. So sometimes the simplest question in the world is the one where we can learn the most about you. So this is, may sound very simple, and it is. But I'm going to go down the line, because the incumbents just spoke, I'm going to start with the challengers and get to everybody. One thing you love the most about the City of Mason? And if you could wave a magic wand and just immediately change something about the City of Mason and make it any way you want, what would you do? So it's both of those to you.
My favorite thing about Mason is the community feel, that we can walk a mile and see friends and pop into shops where I know the people who own it and, and the way that, that people just are connected and know each other. We're in a large rural, or a large metro area, but we have a small town feel, and I really like that. I love seeing our kids out riding their bikes and, and walking after school to the parks and to the ice cream shops and all that. If I could wave a magic wand, there was an idea in the, presented during the concept presentation for the downtown development that I just absolutely love. And it was connecting a bike trail that makes a loop. So we currently have a trail that goes kind of through Pine Hill Lake Park and then around the front here. And they proposed connecting it kind of through Rose Hills Cemetery around to Warped Wing and then along through the neighborhood, basically to make a whole big loop. If we could do something like that, I would just absolutely love it. To be able to easily get all the way around, and we could get ourselves a beer at the Common, and we could get some ice cream at the Whippy Dip, it would be-
You are the-
Jeff's kiss.
You are the Bike Path candidate. Last night, we had a flower candidate for Deerfield, and they liked what we do in Mason. Mr. Gibson, what do you love? What's, if you can just narrow it down to just the top thing about Mason? And then what would you change immediately if you could?
I think that's a pretty easy question. What do I love about this city that we live, live in? I mean, Joy spoke with the, to a lot of the things that I think we all enjoy. I love the sense of community. I love how when somebody's down or somebody needs help, that people come. And I just, I love that with all my heart. If there was one thing that I could wave a wand, that's pretty easy. And I spend a lot of time with a lot of people here in this community doing that. And that's trying to figure out generational poverty and food insecurities for kids right here in Mason. You don't have to go anywhere else. It's right here in Mason. And when I first learned about it, just at one school, the MECC School, there were 68 kids that if they weren't sent home with food, they wouldn't eat anything. Here, again, you know, we have, we're in this bubble of so much wealth, it could be solved so quickly. And I think that if we could wave a wand, it's really, it's not even a wand. It's something that we can do here. And it just helps all of us if, and all of us pitch in, we could do this pretty easily. That would be it.
Thank you. Mr. Stricula, your thoughts on the thing you love the most about Mason and what you would change immediately?
And it's been said already, and I think it's what we all love about it, and that's the community. And we're a city of 33,000 plus residents. And yet I can go to a music event downtown and run into people that I know. I can be at a sporting event and see good friends, and my kids can run into friends there. And it, it, Mason has a small town feel, and it's nice. It's nice to, to know your neighbors and to see them when out and about. And so that, that's the thing that I love about Mason. And how the community rallies around each other in times of need, in times of tragedy. And seeing that, so that's the thing I love about Mason. My wand, the other way, is a little bit more superficial, I think, than everybody else's. It's traffic. I just like to fix traffic.
You can use your wand however you want, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
You would fix the traffic?
Yeah, traffic.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Bradburn, besides cheese conies at Skyline, what's your favorite thing about Mason and what would you change?
I, I think in the years I've been here, it's, it's some of the people I've met. I think that it's nice to have the small town feel. I think that is some of the, the issues with the downtown. There are some people that like the small town and don't want to see it change. It will change. There's all, the only thing that's constant is change. But I think it's the safety of walking in the community, riding in the community on your bicycle or driving or whatever. We have a safe community. And if you have a safe community, you will have residents that want to come and visit your businesses. My magic wand?
Hey, this is the drum roll here.
William Henry Mason, why couldn't you made the road as wide as the one in downtown Lebanon?
Yeah.
There you go, you can go back in time if you want with the wand. Ms. Sanders, you get the final wand and also what you love the most about Mason? And what would you change if you could, like just snap your fingers and change?
Yeah. Gosh, it's hard to narrow it down, obviously for all of us, to one thing in Mason. As you guys have spoken about the small town feel and community, the people who live here are kind. They are loving, they are generous. They will go above and beyond if someone needs something. And it makes, reminds me of the Angel Alley down in downtown Mason that the Winter, Jen and Mark Winter have put together. If you haven't seen it, I really encourage you to do so. What a special place. It feels, it feels spiritual. It feels, it's just, it's amazing. The other thing I would say, obviously Mason City Schools are amazing. In fact, I got a call from a principal today and I was so thankful he caught my son doing something he shouldn't be doing. Because every time they're caught, it's an opportunity for us. You know, if they don't get caught, even though it's little minor things, I'm just thankful how loving they are. For my kid, they love him even though he makes a mistake. They see him as a kid and that's what kids do. So I'm really, really thankful for the administrators at Mason. And I know my time is up, but if I
I'm going to grant you 15, 20 more.
I know, I go long, sorry.
Just go ahead.
Okay, magic wand.
Yeah.
Traffic, obviously, I, it takes me longer to get around the corner from my house to the school than it does all the way down to Deerfield Town Center if I go the back way. So that I would change. And it's going to take a magic wand to change that. So we need to be on the same team here and figure out how to take care of these things. And then lastly, my magic wand would just be, oh my gosh, I wish cell phones just turned off while people were driving because I have experienced way too many close calls in Mason with teens and adults driving while on their cellphone and, and coming down towards Pine Hill Park around the curve and up onto the sidewalk. That, if I could just magically take that away, that's
Well, the good news is tomorrow, the law goes into effect.
You're right.
But for some reason, you're still allowed to hold the phone up to your ear.
I know.
And you're allowed to text at red lights, but not stop signs.
Yeah.
So it's still
I just wish they turned off.
Not quite magic, but it's
All together, just shut them down.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to do closing statements in a moment, but before we do, is there anything we did not hit on? Any topic that I could give you 60 seconds and you can say whatever you want? If not, we'll move on to the closing statements. Okay, Ms. Sanders?
I just have something that, as I'm looking through all my papers of all the things I wanted to touch on. One thing that I'm not sure we brought up that I think is really important is that Mason is financially in a great position. When I talked to Levi Wells this week about the police force and what do they need and do they need more staff? It's really not a fiscal issue in Mason. And we are really fortunate that we are in such a great position. It's really more about staffing and they just don't have enough people out there to hire. And we need to remain competitive. And all these things we do in Mason and we dream of are all amenities that make Mason more attractive. So that when someone goes to get hired on the Lebanon Police Force or the Hamilton or wherever, they want to come to Mason because of the great things that we do in Mason. So I think that's important to remember to keep our eye on. And then lastly, I just think understanding everything we choose to do that's new and exciting and vibrant is amazing. But it has to be sustainable for the rest of its life. Whatever we create, we need to remember that it's going to be around 100 years later and we need to plan ahead and budget well for that.
Thank you. Anybody else, or go ahead, Mr. Bradburn?
If I may, there has been discussions in the Safety Committee as far as additional police. We are in competition with every other agency to hire officers. You are correct, it's not a financial situation, it's trying to find quality candidates.
Exactly.
That's the main thing, is to try to find a quality candidate. So we're working on it. In fact, we have a meeting, I think October 23rd. It's going to be a two-hour meeting, as I recall. Looking at the mayor, does it, mayor, does that sound right? Yep, so, so we're going to have discussions on that. So it's not something that's been knocked off the table, it's something we know that's there. We're going to work on it, we'll come up with a resolution.
Okay. Closing statements. Everybody's going to get 60 seconds here. And we're going to start with Mr. Stricula. You go first, and thanks for being here tonight, by the way.
Thanks, and thank you, Mr. Doris, appreciate it. And again, thank you to the chamber for setting us up and the schools for the lovely facility. I just want to say, again, I've, I've learned a lot in the last four years beyond council. It was almost a, two different, entirely different experiences from the first two years, going through a pandemic, dealing with all of those types of issues and the residual effects of that. To the last two years, and I was seeing a little bit of normalcy there. You know, and myself, with the help of, of others that are, that are here, we were able to navigate through a lot of really tough decisions and, and difficult times that I think helped all of us come out better on the other side. And I think what this, what the city needs is somebody who, again, can look at these issues practically, can look at them unemotionally. And, and judge whether it's, it's good for the city or it's not. Can partner with organizations like the Maids Chamber, like the Maids CUC, not vilify them, but use them as a tool and, and be good neighbors with them and the business owners. And we've got a lot of opportunities still ahead of us. And, and having that four years of experience, I just hope that I've earned that right for another four years from you. And if it resonates with you and if that makes sense, then, you know, I'd really be honored if I got your vote on November 8th.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders?
7th, sorry, November 7th. Don't come out on November 8th.
That would be bad, that would be bad for you if everyone showed up to vote for you on the 8th.
November 7th, please.
We have had some odd elections the last several years, so you never know. Ms. Sanders?
Well, again, thank you for having us tonight. I think times like this, I get really excited when there's community conversation and feedback and time for us all to hear each other. And so I hope to be a part of that and continue that. We have a lot to be proud of here in Mason, we really, really do. I'm personally running for Mason City Council to continue to serve the public and keep what Mason needs, what we uncover, the needs of the residents, the businesses, the students, the teachers, everybody in Mason. What we do is driven by the needs that come about in Mason. And I look forward to helping uncover those and work towards creative solutions as a team with regionalism in mind. I do feel like that I've been prepared over 20 years or more in the roles that I've served to continue public service at this level. And I would be really honored if you would let me vote me in, focus on smart, sustainable solutions for Mason.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, you have 60 seconds.
I'd like to just comment that I hope you saw the climate in which we all were here discussing tonight. Where we were collaborative, working together, listening to one another. And I think that's what it's going to take, is more of that. You know, as, you know, my wife and I were taking a walk over the past weekend, you know, beautiful day. We could see the beautiful, the, the tree-lined street that we walked down and the leaves that were changing. The crunch of the leaves under our feet. We could smell, you know, there was somebody grilling out, so we could smell that. Somebody had a fire as we walked by. Just all the great things that as we walked through there, like, man, we are so blessed to live in this city and just in our own neighborhood. We were just so proud to live there. And, I mean, Mason is a fantastic place. And again, like I said in the beginning, you have five candidates here and they all love this city. And so I think you guys have a really good and, and a difficult choice to make because you have five of us. So thank you for your time tonight. And it was greatly appreciated to be able to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bradburn?
I kind of figured you were going that way, okay?
That worked out?
It did work out. First, everybody that hears, thank you, appreciate it. I am a little nasal with a cold, I'm sorry about that. And to those out in, I'll say, TV land and that. I think the bottom line is, what I bring to the table is, is prior experience. And just to give you a couple of things that, that I think helps make us a better community to be in. You know, I can remember many years ago, when I was on council, I had a city engineer that wanted to hire one person to go ahead and time the traffic lights. I said, nah, 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 we're not going to do that. So I took my experience from Springdale and said, let's go down and look at their computerized system. And you have a computerized traffic signal system in, in Mason. Now, it may not work too well at times as far as the traffic load, but you have the ability to adjust it. And it's what a city council member needs to do, not just look at what's here now, but look at what other communities have done and see where you can make your community better. Thank you.
Thank you. And as you might expect, Ms. Bennett?
Thank you. I believe that the job of a city council member is to represent you. We work for you. And it's our job to co, to you and ask for your feedback and use that to inform our decisions. That's the core of who I am. I want to hear from you and I have already taken a lot of steps and to, to get your feedback. I want to remind everyone again that I do have a community survey. And I would love for everyone to complete it. I'm asking folks what you like and what you would like to see. And I read every submission. I've made the survey available in five languages because I know that we have people from all over the world who've moved here to Mason. And it's an amazing thing. So if you are more comfortable in Spanish, Arabic, Mandarin or Hindi, it's available to you in that language as well. These are, this is how we identify what we need to focus on and what our priorities should be, listening to one another. Thank you for your time and I, I request your vote on November 7th or before.
Not after, though.
Not on the 8th.
Before I read my last thing that I'm supposed to read to say goodbye, I just wanted to say, in my business, obviously, politics has changed the game. And a couple of days ago, I read a news story and on social media that same night, I was called a socialist lefty and a right-wing expletive, on the same night, reading the same story.
That's impressive.
Yeah, and, and the truth of the matter is, more people, so many people are fearful to really say what they believe in nowadays. But most of us, whether you're Democrat or Republican, we don't align with everything this party believes or that party believes. So I just say, I appreciate you being here tonight. And I was going to say what Mr. Gibson said, which is, two years ago, I hosted the forum. I don't want to say it was embarrassing because, you know, there's a lot of passion. And again, I'm, I get passionate sometimes and I say some things in the way I don't mean for them to come out. But I will say, tonight was refreshing and I, if, if, if we have these five here and three of them are chosen, I think we're in good shape. If we can all talk like this and collaborate, I, I think that's amazing. So I appreciate you having me tonight and I appreciate the way this discussion went tonight. I think it's really something that is a model for other township cities to look at when it comes to what we need to be doing and moving in that direction instead of what we're seeing every day from both sides, frankly. So with that opinion in mind, I'd like to just thank a lot of you for, you know, all of you for being here. I think I might have lost my, after all of that, the dramatic finish. Is there a, what was I, I need to thank, oh, there we go. Sorry, okay, I just want to make sure. It's like reading for your sponsors and then you miss it and then you get in a lot of trouble for that. But I just wanted to thank all of you for being here tonight, you know, frankly. And I'd like to thank Flagle, Huber Flagle, who sponsors the chambers advocacy programs and makes events like this possible. As a reminder to the people out there, the forum is available through ICRC TV and the Maids Chamber's website and Facebook pages. See, I have to read this, I'd forget all this. And we encourage the community to get out and vote. And once again, Mr. Stricula, it is November?
7th.
November 7th.
November 7th, please.
Thank you, thanks for, thanks for being here, everybody.